I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCoslin, can you please take a roll?
Mrs. Feis.
Here.
Mrs. Janasek.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppe.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrac.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
All eight members present.
Thank you. Are there any public comments tonight on the agenda items? On the agenda items, yes? Please come to the mic, yes.
Do you want me to do it now?
If you have comments on the agenda items.
Oh, I'll need to, I'm sorry. No, I was just...
We'll have general comments at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Any online comments?
No.
Mr. Modrac, can you lead us through the Facilities and Services Committee?
Yes, we already have two presentations tonight. One from Macearo about the new K-5 elementary school and one from SiteLogic on IMS. We'll start with our representative from Macearo.
Okay, now it's on. Yeah, my name is RC Schultz. I am the project manager for Macearo, the construction manager for the new elementary project. I'll be joining you guys here on your Tuesday night meetings for the next 34 months or so, giving you an update on the project.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having me. So, yeah, thank you. This slide here, and I apologize, I didn't submit this in advance with the holiday and come back from vacation. It was kind of caught off guard here with my dates. So I put this together. For those of you who may or may not know, this is your whole project team with Drawl and Macearo. We are the design and construction manager on the project. The consultants are there in all the prime contracts that we awarded last month. Getting started here, last month, the notice to proceeds and the contracts went out to the contractors. We have begun to receive those back as well as with all the bonding information from the primes. We had, Drawl has put together their conform set and issued that, which includes all the alternatives that were selected, all the addenda that was issued during the bid process, all one cohesive set of drawings and specs for the construction of the building. We have also scheduled the project kickoff meeting with all the prime contractors that will be held at Macearo's offices this Thursday. I would also like to note that myself and Bernie Ackerman, who is my site manager, will be, we are onsite all day, every day, both of us. We will get the OAC meetings scheduled, which will be a bi-weekly meetings going forward. We have not scheduled the first one yet, but as, within the next few weeks, as construction ramps up and contractors mobilize, namely Rycon, we will get them set up and they will be at twice every other week from here till the end of the project. I'd also like to mention that the building permit, all that paperwork and process has been finalized and we, the project construction team, are in possession of the permit.
It's been a long time coming.
One note I'd like to add here that I don't have on this slide is recently, we, the design team and Macearo has recommended to the district the procurement of services for the soils testing for ECS Midwest.
Yeah, mid-Atlantic, ECS Mid-Atlantic, it's actually one of your board, on your board agenda tonight. But just to kind of circle back on this, I think I mentioned this last month to you, but they're the geotechnical engineer who did all the borings and analysis for our design. And they would be the same continuity to be onsite then for the earth moving and the placement of soils, excavations and fill, as well as foundations. So they will, part of their role is to make sure that soils that are coming out of the ground and that are being exposed are consistent with expectations. They're helping to direct when there's unsuitable material to be removed from the project site, or if there's something that needs to happen, to amend the soil to make it suitable for placement, as well as construction of things like the retaining walls and foundations. So there is additional testing beyond the soils, but this is the, you know, basically the next year is really going to be consumed with a lot of the earthwork on the site. So these guys would be, need to be involved for that first portion. RC and myself have been kind of working on part two of the testing, which would be to get either them or another firm, we're soliciting proposals from multiple people to do other construction testing and special inspections. And so what that includes are things like structural testing and concrete and fireproofing and the wind loading and the building envelope. So there's a lot of additional testing. It may end up that ECS is the recommendation for that portion of the testing as well, but this approval is strictly based on the earth-moving site work operation. So we'll be coming back to you sometime this winter, spring with a second proposal for kind of part two of the testing, but this is the one that's the most urgent because this one is going to be starting here relatively soon.
Another portion of my reports on a monthly basis will be project safety here. You know, we, I will mention items such as days without recordable accidents and other safety issues that may or may not pop up during construction. We'll also keep track of the OSIP enrollment. We have actually started taking enrollment from the initial contractors, Rycon mostly, and their preliminary subs. Macearo will also be collecting the clearances for the projects. We'll collect them from the contractors, bundle them together, issue them to the district in one cohesive set to have the district make the decision of whether to approve or not a construction worker. Once they have been approved, we'll follow the district's lead and the district's recommendation of whether we badge them or have another process by which to keep track of them. We have discussed, since our, our site is, will be behind a construction fence and separate from where the kids are attending school, maybe not badge everybody, but certainly any work that would take place outside that fence, there is some work that has to take place outside the fence that they would, those workers would be identified via a badge. Minimum PPE for the site, I mention this here because it's also for, it would include any visitors that would come onto the site. Minimum PPE is hard hat safety and high vis. That's not only a Macearo requirement, but it's also your OSIP requirement as well. And any, every worker that comes onsite the very first day, they go through Macearo's safety orientations, 20-minute video, and just to assure that they're brought up to speed on all our safety requirements. Six-week look ahead here for the, for the time being, just getting up and moving, is finalize all the contract executions. Like I said, we're starting to get signed contracts back from the contractors. They're going to the architect. Once they do their thing, they'll kick them over to the district to get the final signatures and be done. So we have, like I said, we started getting clearances for the contractors, so we'll be in that process of doing that. Submittals, part of our kickoff meeting this Thursday is to bring everyone up to speed on our submittal process. So hopefully the long, long lead items and certainly the items we need right off the get, we could get those submittals going. Coordination drawings, MEPs get together, get coordination drawings, and then the actual work that you'll be seeing will be installation of temporary roads, sedimentation basin, installation of the temporary channels and the stream culverts and beginning cotton fill. That's all like our ENS and our Phase One of our DEP process.
So, how many of those acronyms do you know?
You will be tested.
You've heard several different acronyms.
My, my last slide is for questions. So, and then part of my monthly report, I'll stick some progress photos in so you guys can see what's going on. Obviously, we don't have any progress, but I did have our guys come out and do some drone photographs, and this is one of them, of an overhead shot of the whole project site.
One thing I wanted to mention to follow up on something RC said is, for the board, as well as if there happened to be a public requirement to, any, any visitors onto the site should be checking in with Macearo and their construction office will be in the residence along King School Road for the first portion of the construction project. At some point, there will be a trailer setup, and then that would be the place to, but any public who's thinking that they want to, they need to talk to somebody or have a concern, it should not be going to the middle school. It should be going to Macearo's office at the, along King School Road. And I think you'll probably put a temporary sign up or something along King School.
Yeah, oh yeah, we'll, absolutely.
So what kind of system are you guys using to, for the safety? Like, people come in with their license, they hand it to you guys? You guys use like a Raptor system or?
There's the standard five clearances, you know, the PA criminal, and I might miss one here, the PA criminal, child abuse, the FBI background, and there's two reports that are kind of like self-reporting.
Yeah.
There's a total of five, so there's five paperwork. We don't submit them to the district until they have all the paperwork that's required and it's all filled out correctly. If there's one thing missing, then we, we, as the intermediate step, we kick it back to the contractor, so this is not ready to submit. So once we get all that together, per worker, we will hand it over to the district, to Anthony, and he will do the final review. So he's not going to be chasing down, hey, this guy's missing this, this isn't signed, this, you know. When he gets it, it'll be ready for his review.
Yeah, and it's, the only thing that kind of threw me off was the sticker. You know, they're going to get an ID badge or a sticker. A sticker doesn't sound very safe to me, you know? So that's why I asked about the system.
I, I, I put that on her because part of our standard process, when we run everyone through the safety orientation, we give them a hard hat sticker to put on, their hard hat. Therefore, we visually know this guy has been through our safety, he's supposed to be here, we know of him, you know, he's not just someone who walked on the street.
I like that, it's kind of like football decals, you know, in high school, you get one for every tackle.
In light of badging every single person, you know, we talked it over with Anthony, that that's a way of, you know, quickly visually identifying, hey, this guy should be here, this guy shouldn't, what are you doing here? You go, get off the site.
Good. Good. It would be a different scenario like the middle school where we badge them because they're in a building where students are occupying it, but in this case, they're separate from students completely. So to go through the process of badging everyone, it's time-consuming, it's not cost-effective, and there's probably not a good reason to do that unless they're going to be doing something in an area where students are going to be involved.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, and workers should never be in the, in NAMs at all. And if they have a need for whatever reason to shut something off or, you know, turn exterior lights off, that work will probably take place when the school is not occupied, during spring breaks, winter breaks, summer breaks. So the work that would be happening on the outside of the fence would be adjacent to the building, whether they're digging a ditch, trying to, you know, capture some power or tie into a sanitary, existing sanitary line, that, that.
I think you're saying all the right things that people will want to hear who are worried about security, so I appreciate the response.
I had a question from one of the property owners on the, I guess it'd be on the east side of the property on King School Road. There's a parcel or a part of the property that they use to access a garage back there, and so their request is if you could just clearly mark the construction entrance so that, that access doesn't get damaged. It was, it was utilized under a kind of a leaner agreement with the previous property owner, and we're working through kind of a, more of a permanent legal agreement with them now, but if you could just make sure that that access doesn't get damaged.
And we'll have a construction fence with gates where we want construction workers to enter.
Okay.
There will be a gate. And part of the DEP and the Allegheny County Conservation District's approval of our site drawings is a rock construction entrance. I mean, there will be no mistake of where, where the construction entrance is and is not.
I do want to point out, though, that at some point during the construction, contractors may need to use that driveway because they'll be, that pole barn is up in that area, and that would be the way to access that, to do demolition. So there may be times when contractors need to be on that roadway, but it would be related to construction work that's happening in that area.
And I think she was warned about that at the meeting that we had.
Could you just give us maybe a couple days' notice or something, so that we can inform the property owner?
Yeah.
Or whoever you guys, you know, we'll give you the information, that way you can let them know, say, hey, we're going, maybe a day or two, we're going to go up that road, it will be this to do this, and we'll be done at this.
I think that the way that sometimes this works out, and I would encourage it, is that, you know, RC becomes familiar to neighbors and that they feel that they can even come to him if they're having concerns and check in at the, at the, at the office location.
Yeah.
Maybe like, we'll get a contact or an email, we can put it on our website if there's any questions, and something Mark or Anthony can do.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I actually think some of his stuff tonight could go up on the short website, too.
Mr. Fustuk, is that something you'd be, that worked for you, like, potentially, since you're a resident there?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry to put him on the spot. He was, he'll, he's here, he lives across the street.
Okay. Sure. Any other questions? That's all I have, folks.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. This time, SiteLogic with an update on IMS.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody. Okay, so we're just going to give an update on Phase 2A and 2B. So 2A is the area that was just turned over to the district, which is kind of the flesh color outlined in red, the first and second floors. And then the area that we had just moved into is 2B, which is the red area, which is your second floor classrooms, above the area that we did last year. So for 2A, again, we completed all finishes and systems in that area except for the nutrition lab. That will be turned over at the end of summer because that is integral to the ramp coming down and the new stair tower and elevator going in. So we turned over the area to the district prior to Christmas. We managed the moving of items with Mark into Phase 2A. We did complete all the local inspections, obtained the occupancy permit that was required, and currently working on punch list items in the evening since we are on second shift now. Just a few pictures, just some of the classrooms that have gotten finished in the process of them moving in. Same color scheme that you saw in Phase One was used in this area as well. Just some pictures of the corridors up there and the new lockers, as you see, nice and wide open spaces. Just some specialty areas. This was just the floor, I know the pictures seem a little hard to see, but this was the flooring that was done in your wood shop room. I believe the middle room is a computer lab, and then the end picture are the two new kilns that was added in the art room. And then in 2B, again, we just got into this area at the new year, so we are really just starting demoing of the existing ceilings and the MEP systems. Three pictures of us wrecking apart your building on the second floor, so that is ongoing right now. Any questions on the areas that were turned over and moving into?
My only question is, did we come across anything we didn't expect in the 2B area so far?
In the demo area so far? I'll let Steve answer that one.
Yeah, a few, few minor things. There's some duct work that was obsolete, that was left in the '90s renovation that we're going to need to tear out, some walls that are, the way they're tied in, they're actually attached to duct work, so we're going to have to take some walls apart and repair, but nothing, no real surprises, nothing major. Just one thing I want to add about the, the Phase 2A, so we, we did get the occupancy inspection. There were about a half a dozen items, a few signage items, add an exit sign. We ended up having to put a temporary handrail up in the control room of the auditorium because the existing wall wasn't up to current codes. So they gave us 30 days to do it, but we actually completed it all the next day. Pictures were taken and all filed to the, to the township, so there were nothing really at all major, so we were able to wrap it up pretty quick.
Okay, and then just, the administration has asked us to start looking at Phase 3, the remaining areas of the building. So we are just starting to do that. If you recall, the areas that have not been completed yet are the work in the auditorium, the music wing, the lower level locker rooms, health rooms and fitness room, and then some miscellaneous work in your gymnasium. So this is just a picture of those areas. They are, what is in orange, nothing on the second floor, everything will be done on the second floor once we get done with Phase 2. And on the first floor, again, that's the auditorium and the music suite, and then the lower level are the locker rooms and gym. So just a little timeline that we have gone over and put together. We have pulled the documents back together, strategizing the best way to bid the job to get the best price for the district. We will be reviewing that with the administration tomorrow. We will receive revised pricings early February. We will de-scope the contractors to make sure everything is in the project and nothing, hopefully, is missed. We'll review that with the administration and the board on February 13th, and then we have to give a 10-day notice for the GISA project, so that will go in on the 16th, and that will allow, if the board decides to move forward, to have board action on February Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Christensen, that is all for Facilities tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, can you take the three items under Finance Committee? I guess there's two items that we need to vote on.
Yes. The first item is payment for Independence Middle School Phase 2 renovations. The administration's recommendation to approve payment of the amount of $31,070.22 to Hades Design Group for Phase 2 renovations at Independence Middle School. And the school board directors approve, the administration's recommendation to approve from ECM Mid-Atlantic LLC to provide earthwork, phase construction material, testing services for the K-5 elementary school project. Fees will be based on the actual qualities and duration during construction for their concluded rate schedules. And this is the same soil testing that Cassie talked about earlier tonight.
Yep.
So I move numbers one and two.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion was made by Ms. Turner, seconded by Mr. Scalzo.
Voting is open.
And then the final item at your seat tonight was the funding for, or the financials for Fund 31, 32, and the new Fund 39, which I believe is the elementary school.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Feis, can you take the one item under other?
Sure. The Board of School Directors appoints Christina Hedley to fill the unexpired term of Dan Grisbeck.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Feis, seconded by Mrs. Hoppe.
Voting is open. Motion carries, seven yays, one abstention.
I would, I would like to explain why abstain from the vote. To be fair, open and transparent, my family is related to the candidate, so I thought it was the right thing to do to abstain.
Thank you. And congratulations, Christina.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item then, any public comments on anything related to school matters? Two minutes. Yes, please come to the mic up here.
I have some support, which is nice. My name's Kathy Gibson. I am a mother of a high school wrestler, and I was coming here to make some of you aware of what's going on in the wrestling room, and I would like better answers than what I was given. I did make a phone call, I spoke with Jim Fodzie. He told me to go ahead and make an email to Laura Grimm, so I did, and I put Joe Valani on it as well. The biggest thing is, is there's been skin issues. We have not had skin issues. Most of these kids have been wrestling since elementary school. There are skin issues and infections. Supposedly, they're cleaning it better now. They're putting off bombs. However, this Saturday, 9:00 AM, when they went into practice, the bomb was still in the wrestling room, not cleaned up. Our own team has to purchase our own cleaning products. We're not using an expensive spraying system to take care of that wrestling room because the school uses it for other activities. It's not exclusive to just the wrestlers, which I am asking that it would be, especially during the season, because this is the one sport that you get a skin infection, you don't wrestle. If it spreads, then the whole team could be losing out, so they're losing out on their competitions, possibly losing out on scholarship opportunities. The only team that I know that went in, tore the mats up, cleaned underneath the mats, cleaned the mats, cleaned the walls. I've never seen a football team or a baseball team take care of any of their own stuff. So, not to mention the financial costs of co-pays of a lot of us parents. Once they get these issues, we have to keep taking them back and taking them back and taking them back, and then figure out how to get them taken care of and how to get them re-released, which was a real treat. The condition of the mats, the mats are ruined. You guys have paid for it. The school district has paid for the mats. The mats have multiple black marks, multiple holes, multiple tears, there's trash left in the room, there's food left in the room, there are pencils and no cards left in the room. The, from Laura Grimm, it said that, Joe Valani said that there was academic needs that needed to be addressed. I kind of know what some of those academic needs are, and I kind of know what some of them really shouldn't be.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up. Not, not that this is an important, okay, but...
No, so, well, yeah, I'm almost done. I just have one more, like, if you just give me another minute. So, and the other thing, it's like, no locker room for the boys, they have to keep their stuff outside. Personal items have been messed with and stolen. Then the youth program, just real quick, now the youth program is not allowed to practice in the wrestling room. According to Ms. Grimm, she said that's because they're not allowed in there during varsity events. The swimming people still go in during varsity events. I understand we don't have swim pools somewhere else, but we don't have a wrestling room for our youth program anywhere else either. You got that new elementary school? Put one in there, K-6. That might solve it. And they also told because they don't have their own door to get in, and that's why the swimming gets in, but the wrestling doesn't, which really is not fair.
Seems like we're going to have somebody that can... Okay.
So, I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to add for your two minutes? So, I don't know, Steve, you wanted to add for your two minutes?
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
You said you emailed the administration?
I emailed Laura Grimm, the athletic director, and on there, I also had Jim Fozzie and Joe Valani.
If you wouldn't mind, there's one, schoolboard@bphawks.org would get it to all us, because I'll be honest with you, I can't speak to the rest of my colleagues.
I just want to make you aware.
That's what I'm saying, we're, we're not aware.
This would be our first step, since I see better every single try. So, I'm thinking after you guys try, we'll be better, right?
So, if, if you wouldn't mind, you said, go on our website, you know, schoolboard@bphawks.org.
Okay.
We will all get that information that you sent to the AD and the high school principal along with your message here today.
It doesn't have, it didn't have all this.
It's okay, but it gives us, it gives us that reference for timing.
I have a verbiage with Jim, which, I mean, I like Jim, I like Joe, I've never met Laura, to be honest, but.
Okay, but thank you. We want, we want to address this as soon as possible, right away.
Okay, that would be fabulous.
Thank you for that, Michelle.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Can I add anything, Mary?
Yeah.
You have two minutes.
I'm Steve Hallenbein, I live in 1169 Aradale Drive. My son has been grappling since he was in, since he was three years old. He was a big jujitsu person, started wrestling in ninth grade. My son did not have one skin infection until he started wrestling here at the school district. I've paid for multiple co-pays. I come from a, I work at a school district that is a big-time wrestling program, Canada McMillan. They are required to shower after they leave, they have their own locker room. These kids don't have an access to a place to shower. They will go from wrestling practice to a club, they won't come home until like nine o'clock. It's like a four-hour, five-hour span of having other man sweat on top of you, or child sweat on you. Basically, my son, my conversation with my son every morning is, how are our grades? How's our weight? And how's our skin look? That, that's, that's, that's where I'm at. And basically, I've been, he's been to the doctors five times since like June, gets it, goes away, gets it, goes away. But basically, I don't want to take up your time, but it's just, it's a concern, and it's like you said, they only have so many competitions. You take a kid out for a week, that, it's not like a whole football game where you have, you have one match, you get taken out, and this is his junior year, this is scholarship time. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
What's that before, Green World, Big C, or?
It's all three.
Really?
Yes.
They don't culture it necessarily, if Mike had it, had something, they didn't culture it, you don't know, it should culture it 100%.
Thank you.
We want to mention the lovely heavy antibiotics on a kid's body for 10 days, and then we pay up to 100% on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Didn't we put in a system several years ago to automatically spray the wrestling room and weight room?
I thought we did.
I remember voting on spending the money for something like that and liking it, so is that, are we using it?
We'll find out.
I'll let you know.
Some news to me.
Every week, man, we just load you up with like eight or nine more things, so.
He's never.
I wonder Doug's leaving.
He's exhausted.
I wonder why Doug's leaving. Find us money.
Any other public comments? Any online?
No callers.
Any board comments?
I do. I was at the Bethel Park Education Foundation meeting last night. I would encourage students and teachers, there is money out there. If you need help with your DECA project, if you need help with out-of-the-box items for your classroom that are for instructional purposes, please apply. They're willing to help, and it's a great resource. And the other thing to you two parents, I had a brother that wrestled in '94, '95, and '96 here in Bethel Park and never had an issue, so we need to fix this. Thank you.
I want to, I want to just welcome Christina, and I'm excited to work with you. It's awesome.
Next week, you'll be sworn in, and, and then you and everybody else will get your mug shots for updated on the website.
Hold the card number.
Okay. Any other board comments? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have to have the motion before the second.
Who raised the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Media adjourned.